Right, if we can have our pit masters, students and sponsors come to the front.
And food is welcome.
Yeah, here.
Yeah, brisket is welcome.
If you'll just hand them to, yeah, alright. So, as our, as our team takes the stage up front, um, the Temple High School barbecue pit masters team has only been in existence since the start of the school year, but they are already off to a blazing start after competing in their first event. The five-person team won reserve champion honors at the Texas High School Barbecue Association Super Qualifier Event in San Antonio on December 9th. That performance earned the THS barbecue pit masters a spot in the state championship competition which will be held in May. The idea for this team originated, um, in CTE with, uh, teacher Margaret Fife, uh, taking the lead as the staff sponsor, and she reached out to Joe Madrano, who has competed in barbecue cook-offs across the state with his son Reese about coaching the team. So Joe and Reese, um, have also won, uh, I'm sorry, competed in two world championships. So these teams are judged, um, uh, on five different elements, and each one of the team members serves a very specific role. So Reese Madrano, as our sophomore, waives, Reese, is in charge of, is in charge of the ribs. Anthony, is Anthony here? No, he wasn't here. Um, he's a senior and he's responsible for the chicken. Uh, William, William here, William, uh, handles the pork chops. Uh, Jordan Magana, who's not with us, but he does the skirt steak for the street tacos. And Randy, where are you? You're hiding back there, I knew I saw you. She takes over the Dutch oven and does the dessert. So, um, the state championship will be held in May, um, but the reality is, we just couldn't be more proud of you guys. You know, one of the things that Temple is known for is about competing, and in your very first year, your very first competition, you were competing at the highest level. So we are truly, truly so proud of you. We would have been happier if you had brought us something to sample, but we're still very, very proud of you. So congratulations to the pit masters. And I, I promised parents they could take pictures too, so don't move for a little bit. Alright, parents, y'all just tell me when you're done. Everybody good? Okay, alright. Pit masters again, thank y'all so much. We are so very proud of you and can't wait to hear what happens in May.
Just want to say thank you for the Temple committee, for standing behind these kiddos, it's pretty special. I don't know who gets more out of it, them or me.
We, we know.
I've had the greatest time of my life, and I'm looking forward to so many more, and I'm looking forward to a national championship.
Just on behalf of the board, I mean, congratulations coming this, to the highest honor so quickly. And again, I have to re, I got very hungry thinking about this. I love good barbecue, so, uh, thank you all again for, and this is just one example of the fine CET, CTE programs we have. We have so many, but.
And actually, Joe.
Our next item is the long-time spotlight, spotlight recognition.
We have a surprise for you. I know, I know. You, oh, you're black and I've been working very hard behind the scenes. So I'm gonna give you this, and then I want you to go stand up there while I say some nice things about you. Um, one of the things that we didn't really mention in the write-up previously is that Joe is not an employee of the district, he is a parent and, um, a volunteer, but, um, there is much more to Joe than even that. Um, he has had a very successful career in law enforcement, currently serving as the chief investigator for the Bell County Attorney, but he is probably most proud of being a graduate of Temple High School, class of nineteen eighty-eight. Joe comes from a family of Temple Wildcats. He bleeds blue in every sense of the phrase, from leading booster clubs to mentoring kids to sharing a love and expertise for anything. You can find Joe with his hands in something that has to do with Temple ISD. As the spouse of an educator, he's often been voluntold, uh, to participate in some things, but he never hesitated and, and, uh, he never complains, as long as it was beneficial to students. Uh, since two thousand and five, you could find him sitting in bleachers, in the press box, along the sidelines, in the dugout concession stands, working hard to make kids receive the best experience possible, simply because they are part of the Wildcat family. Joe has a heart for kids, he's very passionate, especially when it comes to something he loves. He shares that drive and passion of all things, um, and his love for Temple and the Wildcats and his own kids, um, as well as the others of Temple ISD radiates from his heart and soul. Um, once Joe gets in with an organization, he is steadfast and his involvement never wavers. Um, I'm gonna date myself and probably both of us, but I don't know, it's been fif- fifteen years at least, maybe twenty, uh, since I've known Joe as a parent and, um, who has been actively supportive of all things that involve his kids and others, uh, starting at Scott, Scott Elementary, where his, uh, older children went, and then, um, where Joe actually went, uh, in elementary school as well, and then as they transitioned to Travis Middle School. Um, you'll be hard for, pressed to find someone who is willing to give their time, expertise and guidance to a bunch of teenagers especially, uh, but that's what Joe loves and that's what he does. Um, you know, Joe, we, we always hope that when we graduate students, that they make a difference in their community, and you are truly an example of what we would hope for all of our alumni, um, to come back and make a difference in our community, and for that and for so much more, we are honoring you and our alumni spotlight.
I'll, I'll just say two things. One, I, I want to tell you, I appreciate you for, uh, working in a volunteer way to provide the opportunity that we have for students that are behind. In fact, that is, uh, we're gonna continue to work hard, hopefully make a good, uh...
My teacher and my wife, my wife is the one that's behind everything, she cleans up after me, she's got it from me.
It's a big job, Joe, we know.
Obviously, I didn't expect it, it's very special to me, because I love Temple and I love the kids, and, uh, we're gonna win. Thank y'all so much, thank y'all.
And Joe, you do have some other family, if you just want to recognize your family that is here tonight.
Yes, I do, my mother-in-law Sharon, Sharon, my father-in-law Keith, Black Dad and Me, Ronnie Burks, Lisa Prince, good friend of ours, my mother Mary, Mary Madrano, of course my wife Allison, and of course John O'Reas, so, anyway, thank y'all, thank y'all again.
Thanks for saying.
Next is recognition, Mikhail Harrison Pilot, All-American Bowl game.
So Mikhail Harrison Pilot was one of just a few hundred, uh, of the nation's best players that were selected to play in the All-American Bowl this last weekend, actually, in, uh, San Antonio. Um, uh, players are selected, uh, to, from across the country to compete in this highest level and culminating activity, uh, for high school students. And Mikhail, I, I don't know the year exactly, but I think the last time we had an All-American player was back Lake Seastruk, is that right? And that's dating me too, because I think I was here, but that was a long time ago. Um, so, um, it's not something that happens very often, um, uh, and we are so very proud of you, and, but, but we are proud of you for several reasons, and not just, uh, your incredible, um, athletic accomplishments. Um, you are truly one of those kids that is an All-American through and through, and an example of that was back at the beginning of the year, you had a really amazing game, uh, with four touchdowns, um, in a game, uh, I'm sure, who was it against? I don't, I don't know. Uh, maybe, I don't know, but four touchdowns in the game, and, uh, so many, I don't know. Obviously, I'm not good with stats, but, um, I know that it was four touchdowns, and what was interesting is, it was actually a tweet that Dr. Ott made the next day, and he said, uh, "One of the things that makes Mikhail Pilot special is the fact that everyone is talking about his four touchdown performance on social media, except for you." Um, and, uh, that speaks to who you are as a person, it speaks about your humility, and in, in fact, anything and everything that I saw from you, even after that game, was all about the team and about your brothers on that team and, um, uh, and working together. And so, um, again, we are so proud of all that you've accomplished athletically, but we are also so proud of the person that you are. And I just wanted to say that before I gave you the jersey. Um, so, um, and Mikhail, uh, great kids like this, um, have great parents, and Mikhail's parents are here with us, we have Coach in the back and Jennifer and his brothers, I think little ones here, is, oh yes, okay, they're both here. But now, you can take a picture with this, as a player. Hey, wanna, wanna, y'all come up and get, let's get a pic of all of them.
I know Jet has a game at Ralph Wilson, but if you want to come up and get a picture for anything.
Yes, they're gonna come up and get a picture real quick with his family.
We're gonna make some coaches matter at Ralph Wilson.
I know, I know. I'm sorry, is he sleeping? Okay, alright. Oh, there he is, hi sweet boy. He's like, whoa. Yes. He's like, go back to sleep, yes. There he is. There we go, there we go. Good luck, I'm so happy for y'all, so proud of you, so proud of you. You may be a difference maker when you come back, right? Alright, don't forget about us. So happy for y'all.
You guys have the lead to catch the game, we understand.
So Temple ISD is proud to join over a thousand school districts throughout Texas, uh, to celebrate January as School Board Recognition Month. Uh, providing an excellent educational experience for all students in our district is a challenge that requires dedication, commitment and courage. Board's, uh, service is voluntary and it's accepted by only a few in the community. It is a tough job with no salary, it is cri- a critically important responsibility that takes time, a mature outlook and careful decision-making. Board of Trustees, on behalf of Temple ISD, we just thank you for caring about our children, our families, our staff and our students. Um, at your, uh, places tonight, you'll see gifts from across, um, the district, from our campuses, as just a small token of our appreciation to you, um, but we are truly so grateful for you and all that you do for us, so thanks.
I'd like to say, well, thank y'all for recognition, but really, I know just, I think I speak for all the members, it truly is a blessing and a calling for us to do this. Uh, we're all part of this community, uh, students, staff, uh, they're one of us, and so we want to do the best we can to do that, and, uh, we're so proud.
I think, he was taking some before, that, yeah, so I think we're good.
But we're wearing different outfits.
And, uh, I, I want to thank, uh, all the principals for being here to support the board and directors, I know we have Fine Arts Director, CT Director, we have a bunch of administrators here, uh, to support as well, thank you so much.
Oh, you're good, you're good.
Item five is Executive Hires. A consideration for approval of the Director of Fin- Finance, uh, Mrs. Stanford.
Actually, I'm gonna do it tonight, yeah, that was a change, sorry.
Oh, Dr. Ward, okay.
Um, so, Mr. Posey, Board of Trustees and Dr. Ott, um, the interview committee consisting of Brandy Stanford, David McCauley, Donna Allman and Brenda Holmes interviewed for the position of Director of Finance on January ninth, twenty twenty-three, and selected Mrs. Terry Bur- Burleson as the lone finalist for the position. Mrs. Burleson graduated from Admiral Radford High School in Honolulu, Hawaii in nineteen eighty-nine, of which I'm jealous, because I do want to live there someday, and she graduated from Texas A&amp;M in nineteen ninety-three with a Bachelor of Business Administration and, and, and Accounting. She became a Certified Public Accountant in nineteen ninety-five. Mrs. Burleson has served as a staff accountant for, and I'm gonna probably mess up some of these names, but Golob Morgan and Petty PC in Tyler, Texas, the Lead Accountant for Glass and Company CPAs PC in Austin, and the Controller for Armbrust and Brown LLP in Austin. Mrs. Burleson has been married to her husband Travis for twenty-nine years, together they have three children, a seventeen-year-old daughter Lydia, who's a senior at Salado High School, a fourteen-year-old son Fabian, who is a seventh grader at Salado Middle School, and a nine-year-old son Travis, who's a third gr- third grader in Salado. Ms. Burleson is excited to join the TISD Finance Team and is looking forward to utilizing her knowledge and expertise for the benefit of the district, as well as the professional growth she will experience in this new role. It is with great pleasure that I recommend Ms. Terry Burleson to the Board of Trustees for approval for the position of Director of Finance in Temple.
Thank you, Dr. Ward, there's any questions from the members? It does require.
Move, move for approval.
Motion by Mr. Gaines.
I second the motion.
Seconded by Mrs. Davis, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the same sign? Alright, the ayes have it, it's approved, thank you.
Okay, well, thank you so much, Ms. Burleson had a prior conflict for tonight, so, um, Ms. Stanford is looking forward to introducing her to you in February.
Look forward to that.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Brad. Item six is the Board Presence Report. A consideration for approval of the twenty twenty-three legislative priorities, and members, you do have a hard copy at your desk, I know we have reviewed these in past meetings, uh, you've had electronic copy, so we're here to adopt them tonight. I will go ahead and, for the public, and read them into the record. These are, uh, positions and priorities that we will use with the Texas Legislature, which started today, and this, uh, this are sort of, just our top issues, more than, really have more than this, but these are just the top priority issues that we're gonna focus on, and this way we'll be able to communicate with them and their staffs, uh, our position on these issues. The first one is the Safety Allotment, and advocate for increased funding of the school's safety allotment and the local flexibility for school districts to work with the communities to adequately meet student-staff safety needs related to hardening of facilities, social emotional support, training and security personnel. Second is fund school, fund schools based on total student enrollment instead of student attendance, and school districts are currently funded based on the average daily attendance of students, which is less than the total student enrollment. School districts provide staff and materials account, accounting for every student enrolled, whether they attend regularly or not, and the current funding structure provides insufficient revenue to school districts for the provision of basic educational services. Temple ISD supports the use of enrollment as a standard for school funding without reducing the basic allotment. Number three is state-endorsed local accountability system. Advocate for the establishment of a comprehensive accountability system that looks beyond the high stakes, multiple choice exams, to meaningful assessments that have value for students, parents and teachers. The development of a local accountability system would include flexible man- measures that local communities value and receive official acknowledgement from the Texas Education Agency. The next issue is vouchers. Oppose any state plan that would use vouchers, tax credits, taxpayer saving grants, tuition reimbursements, or any other, any other means to divert public tax dollars to private entities, home-schooled students or parents with little or no academic or financial accountability or transparency to the state, taxpayers or local communities. And the last one is tax compression with local discretion. In the event of tax compression, advocate for local discretion without spending restrictions to ensure that the need of students, staff and communities are met, local discretion would include bond and tax ratification elections. Members, these are the top priority issues, is there any discussion right now, anybody like to elaborate or discuss this before we take a vote? If not, uh, this does require approval.
Move for approval.
Motion by Ms. Suarez.
I'll second the motion.
Seconded by Ms. Galwin, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the same signs? The ayes have it, thank you. Alright. Item B is consideration for approval of the proposed joint election agreement with the city of Temple, Temple ISD, Temple College and Temple Health and Bioscience Economic District, Development District. That's it. Is, um, do we, is, anybody want to speak on this, or just pass it?
Uh, you can just pass it.
Okay, remember, I think it's pretty, uh, self-explanatory, that's been in our, uh, board books.
Just, Mr. Posey, that it's just a requirement, it was a requirement that came a couple legislative sessions ago, that we have to hold an election with a city or other municipality in our area.
Ms. Suarez, are you abstaining from this? Okay, note that, uh, Ms. Virginia Suarez will be abstaining from this vote. Alright, uh, this does require approval, is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Motion by Mr. Gaines.
I'll second.
Oh, second by Mrs. Cook, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the same signs? Uh, the motion passes with, uh, Ms. Suarez's absence noted. Okay. Item C is the first day to file for school board election, Wednesday, January eighteenth, twenty twenty-three, and the last day to file for the school board election is Friday, February seventeenth, twenty twenty-three, for District Two, District Five and District Seven. A copy of Board Policy BBA Legal is included, listing the eligibility qualifications for running for a Board of Trustee position. Item D, notification of upcoming event, the TASCASB twenty twenty-three Legislative Conference will be held Tuesday, February twenty-first, twenty twenty-three, at the Sheraton Austin Hotel at the Capitol, Austin, Texas, continental breakfast and working lunch provided, registration is required. And E, uh, the superintendent evaluation process, members, I know yesterday, uh, you had an email, uh, with, um, the super, uh, the Dr. Ott's self-evaluation, and also, uh, with, uh, blank evaluation. Can't believe, Marilyn, there's notes up here on the due dates. Okay. Inside the packet? I think I had one here. You know, that's, that's fine, I meant, members. Okay.
It's in the packet, it's in the packet right here.
It's in the packet, I'll just, let me just read it real quick. Uh, just to put it into the record, uh, on the January ninth, we have the email, uh, the document, email to us, uh, hard copies today, and on Thursday, January twenty-sixth, please return your copies to myself or to Marilyn, and then at that point, I will, uh, put, assemble the comments like I've done in the past, uh, combine them with the score, and then we'll meet with Dr. Ott with the valuation, and then present the appraisal at the board meeting on Monday, February thir- thirteenth. Thank you. And F is future items of discussion, are there any items we wish to discuss at future board meetings? Seeing not is important dates and Dr. Ott.
I just have a few here, uh, first of all, I just want to, um, make a comment regarding last week and Temple University, uh, and the way that staff was welcomed back to, um, you know, or from break to... uh, and the way that staff was welcomed back to, um, you know, or from break to school. Uh, it was a real, I mean, it was just a fantastic event, it was put on very, very well. Uh, I think it was a nice blend of meaningful learning and also a chance to socialize and reengage one another, and, uh, I wanna credit the, all the different folks, CNI Department, everybody that, uh, uh, put it on, HR, I mean, everybody, um, Student Services, they did a fantastic job, had a lot of, uh, positive comments, and, uh, I, I think it's generated the right mood and the right, um, dynamic, uh, to start the second semester where it's, it's busy, to say the least. So, I wanted to, uh, credit the teams that put that together, and it was, it was a great effort, well done. Uh, a few things that I have, uh, January nineteenth, uh, is the 2022 Football Vanquitt, and those are always fun to go to, it's at First Baptist Church at six-thirty PM. January twenty-second, which is a Sunday, is the Care Leadership Network, it's the New Year Prayer Service, uh, that will be held at UMHB, uh, at the Meyer Christian Studies Center at three PM. Uh, I will actually be teaching at Baylor University that day, but Lisa Adams will be, um, taking, uh, my place in doing the scripture or the prayer, or maybe both, I'm not sure, uh, the prayer, okay, and she'll do a much better job than me, I'm sure, but, uh, please attend and at least put a little pressure on her, um, if you have a chance. And then January, uh, twenty-fifth is the School Board Policy, uh, meeting, and then the twenty-sixth is Facilities Meeting. And I don't really have anything else. That's it. And then you have, uh, sorry, Mr. Posey, you also have an addendum or, um, a list of important fine art dates too as well, it's right behind it.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Ott. Item seven is consent items, items A through F three. What, how was the pleasure of the board to deal with these items?
Can we pull item A? I'll need abstain from that one.
Okay.
I move that we approve items B through F three on the consent agenda.
Okay.
As one item.
All right. There's been a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Myers. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same sign? Uh, the motion passed. So, right now, we will vote on Amendment A. Is there a motion?
I move that we approve consent item, um, A.
Okay. Motion by, uh, Ms. Gowen.
Seconded motion.
Seconded by Mr. Gaines. Uh, this will be a vote with, uh, Ms. Suarez abstaining. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the same sign? The item passes with the abstention. Thank you. Item eight is action items. A, human resources, no items. B is academics, assessment, and assessment and accountability update. Dr. Adams.
Mr. Posey and board members, Dr. Ott, I am here to hopefully not bore you to death, um, but to, um, share with you the updates, um, in the accountability system, there's some changes that are being proposed, um, by the legislative, um, by, as a requirement of the legislative, um, session, um, but really with the agency, and then there's some adjustments made to our STAR testing, a redesign of the STAR assessment, and so I wanted to give you an update on that, because those are two big changes, okay? So, our goal of the presentation today is to review the structure of the accountability system, I know we visited about that in the fall or in the summer, um, but also to preview those changes. Um, and so I wanna call your attention as we start, um, to look at these changes, I wanna call your attention to something that you have at your table, you have a handout there, um, that is a kind of a, a, a large-scale overview, yes, sir? Um, so you have that at your, at your places, and probably under all your loot that you're gonna take home tonight. Um, so, uh, I, um, a large sa- this is a large-scale overview of the changes to the accountability framework. Um, and just as we begin to get started, I wanna remind you that the Commissioner is required to establish a system that accomplishes three goals, and that's really, um, a, a part of that very first statement there, that we have to make sure that we're continuously focusing on improving student achievement, that we're eliminating achievement gaps between student groups, and then we are becoming, this, as a state, we're a national leader in preparing students, um, for post-secondary success, and we're gonna co- talk a little bit more about that preparedness, um, as we talk about their changes. Um, it is a requirement, um, legislatively to update our system within, uh, within five years, and so it is time, the system began in 2017, and so that's why we're doing it. Um, number three, there's some very specific things, uh, that, uh, the Commissioner has said are the key ideas behind the changes. Um, number one is that districts and campuses, um, should still continue to get the better of either student achievement or student growth. In Temple, we really focus on student growth, um, as well as achievement, and so we're still going to achieve that better of the two, and, and in term of calculating that. Um, secondly, they wanna make sure that ratings are not just on STAR performance, and so you're gonna see, um, a continuation of the embedding of the college career and military readiness indicators, um, but there are significant, significant changes to those, as well as graduation rates. Um, and then they are still looking at, um, extracurricular opportunities for the framework, but they can't figure out how to do that yet, but they're still talking about that. Um, and then lastly, that it should be mathematically impos- a poss- possible for every campus and every district in the district, in the state, to get an A. So those are kinda the, um, big ideas that frame the changes. Um, and so what the state has been doing is getting feedback on changes, and so what you have in front of you on the back of your paper, um, or the second page, are the, or is a high, uh, detail of the changes, and this was released to us in November, but the state continues to get feedback, and so there are some changes, um, that were just released last week, and so I have, I'm gonna provide for you an, an overview of all of those changes, both what was proposed in November, and then based on, um, um, feedback, um, what's now being proposed in January. And I want you to keep in mind that nothing is final until this summer. So all of these things are simply proposed changes, okay? Um, and so I'll ask for question, I'll, I'll, I'll just kinda ask for questions along the way, but please interrupt me, because it's very confusing and complicated, and so please interrupt me if I'm, if I'm not clear, okay? So, let's start by focusing on the accountability system, um, system and those big changes, what the state is calling the A-through-F refresh, okay? So in terms of Domain One, um, remember, Domain One is, is the area where we focus on student achievement, and that's, um, measured by STAR, college and career, and military readiness, and graduation rate. So there's no significant changes proposed for elementary and middle school, but there are changes proposed for high school. One of the proposed, um, changes is that we would add, they proposed to add the accelerated Algebra I testers from middle school, that those would also be included in the high school, um, calculations for student achievement. This is a good thing for us, like, I, I love this one, um, because there are no advanced testers in math at the high school, because the highest test is Algebra I. So those students are required to take the ACT or the SAT, um, which is, is calculated in CCMR, but it would be a great thing to have their, have their score. So that's something that they've proposed. It would only be included in Domain One, um, it would not be included in student growth. Um, so that's one of the proposals. The big changes are, um, CCMR points, okay? So remember, college and career and military readiness is when we look at a student's preparedness as, in terms of a college entrance exam, like a SAT, ACT, TSIA, um, or we look at their, um, CCM, uh, their, their, um, career, which is really measured by, um, industry-based certifications, military, um, which means enlistment, um, um, those are the three things we're looking at. So, in terms of, uh, the big changes, the state has determined that there are some industry-based certifications that they say are not, um, that, that can't, that districts are taking that are not aligned to coursework, and they wanna make sure that the classes kids take in high school drives them to an industry-based certification that leads to a skilled workforce. Okay? And so there are some that they feel are not aligned, and that districts are taking, like, uh, kids might take a Microsoft Specialist, um, certification, but they're not in a class, and they want to stop that. Um, so, uh, they wanna make sure that there's course alignment, and secondly, there are, um, s- industry-based certifications that they feel are not aligned to a high-wage job. So remember when we talked to you a little bit about the cosmetology pathway, and the state says that's not a high-wage job, so we shouldn't have that in, in, in our high schools, but we said, well, it is important to us here regionally and locally, so we had to ask permission to have that call it, that cosmetology pathway in our high school. Um, so, what the state has, has decided is they're going to sunset, that's what they're calling it, some IBCs that they feel like that, that we take in our high schools to get CCMR credit, but don't really indicate that students are ca- career-ready, because it's not aligned to a skilled workforce. I don't know whether I agree with that or not, but that's what they're saying, okay? Um, and so, uh, that's one of the things. Now, when they said they were gonna do that, it was a large uproar, and so now they've amended that to say that there, that we, they will still allow those sunsetted I, um, IBCs, but they're gonna have a campus limit, because they wanna make sure that high schools and districts are not asking, ha- asking all their students to take, um, these IBCs that are not, they feel, high-wage law. So we can only have twenty, so what they're proposing is only twenty percent of our graduates could have a CCMR point for those sunsetted IBCs. So that's the first change they're proposing. The second is to make sure that we have course requirements, um, so that they're aligned to that, so that a student would take, um, uh, uh, an IBC plus a, plus the, plus the courses that, um, are below them, that makes sense, right? And that's the way we do things, but not every school district does that. Um, and so they initially said they were gonna do it with the class of 2023, that's this year, they didn't tell us till November. So everybody got excited about that, and so they've decided and proposed to delay those course requirements for one year, which means those will come into effect, um, with the class of 2024, and then they'll do kind of a year, a, a stair-step effect of how that works for the next three years, and so that's what they've, um, suggested, and yes.
I'm sorry, Lisa, quick question, will, will some of these courses that they wanna sunset, will that affect us at the twenty percent?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so we've, we've been looking at how we need to adjust, um, so, um, there are some, especially in the area of like, construction, um, that they maybe, um, want, they're getting rid of an OSHA, uh, OSHA is a, is one of those courses, um, that a lot of districts have their kids take, um, because that's like a safe, you know, safety course, um, but, um, their, OSHA is not one that they, OSHA is one that they wanna sunset, or they wanna, or a version of that assessment, so we were, we will have to shift to a different assessment. Uh, Microsoft Office Specialist is one that we have our kids take in BEM, but they say that's not driven to a high-wage job, and we need to have, we need to use Microsoft's Office Expert. See, it's the idea of preparedness versus skilled labor, and, and what they're trying to push us to is to make sure that the kids are skilled labor instead of being prepared for that. Does that make sense? We'll talk a little more about that. So that was a great question. So we do, we will have to make some adjustments, and Ms. Ms. Ayers is on top of it, we've been meeting and talking about that, and, and looking at how we're gonna adjust those things moving forward. The last requirement is, the last thing that they're proposing is military readiness, they've taken that away from us, because they are saying that we have to, um, because they didn't have a good way to figure out if, if kids actually enrolled in the military, or, that's not the right term, enlisted in the military, um, because before we were able just to look for interest, um, but now they're saying we have to have a listment paperwork, and so we have to have a verified enlistment paperwork form, um, so that, so that we could get credit for that, and we have to upload that and share that with the state. Um, we are still proposing to them that they look at maybe JROTC completion, like a pathway, um, or possibly, um, the ASFAB results that you have to take to enter the military, and we administer those things, all, all high schools do that, um, but that's currently what they're asking. Again, thinking about the idea, the law says we prepare kids for college and career military readiness, but they're asking for evidence that the student is in the military. It's kind of not the same thing, right? Um, so lastly, and I think what's most important to you as you're thinking about your legislative priorities and things, the Commissioner's also, while he said he's not gonna make any other changes to CCMR, they are looking very closely at college prep courses, which we have our students take at the, at the senior level to, um, to deem themselves col- um, college and career and military-ready, um, and so those are preparatory classes, so they will be successful in college. Um, they've discussed possibly increasing the, um, doing away with those, because they say it's not a good indicator that a student will enroll in college and persist through the fall of their sophomore year. Um, they also are, they also looked at, like, even negating AP and IB tests, they quickly rolled that back, um, but they've talked about maybe increasing the, the, the score, so instead of a three, a student has to get a four or a five, because that would be a better indicator that they could persist into their sophomore year. And so the, the Commissioner's really looking at this idea of persistence, um, versus readiness, and so that's the kind of the conversations that we've been having with legislatures, uh, our legislators and our, um, Commissioner and feedback, and we're still able to give feedback to that. So I'm gonna pause right there, 'cause it's a lot of information, um, and ask, um, do you have any questions regarding CCMR points and how they relate to accountability, or even thinking about your legislative priorities for the upcoming session? Do you have any questions for me about that? Mm-hmm.
They're hired by the government.
Right.
Uh, they're not hired by us, just to be honest with you. Uh, and, uh, so, they are trained by people that are ready in that side. And so, uh, having them go through, say, that it leaves them, you know, to, uh, to
So, uh, the next proposed changes are in the area, uh, Domain Two, and the area of school progress, and so that's really where we focus on the improvements of students. Are students making one year's worth of growth in one year's time in the area of math and reading? That's really what they're focusing on, and this is measured by STAR, that's the only way it's measured. Um, and so, previously, um, what, what the, what the, what the agency is proposing is this transitional table, what you see in front of you. So previously, um, the agency would either, um, you couldn't only earn partial growth or, uh, a point for growth regardless of the level of proficiency from year to year. But now, what the agency's wanting to do is incentivize, um, districts and campuses and give credit for, uh, students who actually make significant growth. And so if you see up there on the, on the, on the table, you'll see a student that maybe the prior year was scored in the low area and did not meet the grade level expectation. Maybe the student had a bad testing day, maybe, you know, there could have been lots of reasons why that happened. But if the student, the following year, is able to hit meets grade level, beyond grade level, they're saying that the district should get four points for that, that's not just one-point worthy, that's four-point worthy, um, and so they're wanting to give us credit for that growth. Um, and this transitional table will also allow us to make sure that we can look at all growth. And so, um, previously, we couldn't ta- um, track growth from a student that maybe took a Spanish Language Arts Test to an English Language Arts Test the following year, but we do have kids that in transition, and so that's gonna allow us to be able to, to, to gather growth for that as well. So, in my mind, this is a great, um, great move for the, for the, uh, for the state to move in that way, because we really do Because we really do focus on growth. Additionally, um, the um, TEA wanted to include the House Bill forty-five, forty-five requirements that I've spoken to you before. That's the um, required tutoring, the thirty hours of tutoring for a student that did not meet. Uh, passing standard on um, a math or reading assessment um, in uh, the previous year. And so the, you know, the US Department of Education has to approve our accountability system, and they told us, they told them they couldn't do that. So what they've decided to do is do it, um, they still wanna give us credit for it, which I love. So we get bonus points for students who scored, did not meets maybe in third grade. And were able to score um, anywhere from approaches, meets, or masters. So they're gonna give us bonus points for that. Because they feel that we, they know we do extra work and have extra focus and intention. Intentionality to make sure that those students make progress, so they catch up with their peers, and they want us to have credit for that. So they've proposed the bonus points, and that's been an adjustment based on um, some of the feedback that they've received. Um, the second part of domain uh, two A is a domain two B, that's school progress. And that's relative performance, which, which basically compares the performance of STAR on STAR for our econ dis students. Our econ- economically disadvantaged students um, to other campuses, and they, they're not proposing any changes um, to that. That, that will maintain the same. Um, the changes will just be how it, domain one is calculated, those things we talked about before. So do you have any specific questions about how growth is calculated? Um, to determine accountability, or, or comments on those changes? All right, domain three, closing the gaps. And so this domain is part of the federal requirement to close the achievement gap. Remember, that's part of statute that we close those achievement gaps. And so it's important to note that this domain has to be approved by the US Department of Education, and they just sent that to them. And so we'll know in February if, if it worked out. Um, this is really um, um, looking at compared to federally set targets for each student group. How are each one of our groups doing in comparison to those targets? Um, and so in terms of closing the gaps for elementary and middle school, they just look at STAR performance. They look at growth on STAR, and they look at English language proficiency of our emergent bilingual students. For high school and um, the district, they look at all those things I just said, STAR and growth and, and uh, English language proficiency. But they also look at college and career and military readiness by student group, and then they look at graduation rate. So all of those things in domain one and two are recalculated again in domain three by student group. Cause we wanna make sure that we're closing the gap. So what they've decided to do first is they want to reduce the group minimum to ten tests. Previously, it was twenty-five. This does not hurt Temple ISD, this is not a problem for us, we are very diverse. All of our student groups have always counted. But this will be challenging for some districts who are like Dr. Ott likes to call them homogeneous. Um, and they don't, they don't have enough student groups of, of a certain, of certain types. And so what, the purpose behind it is to make sure that all students are counted in the accountability system, and, and that's a good thing. Um, but that's not something very impactful to us. Um, the second is that previously, there were fourteen different student groups that we were held accountable for. And so now the agency has said, we just wanna put it into six groups. And so they will have an all student, which we've always had. Um, they will then look at our two lowest performing groups based on racial um, or ethnicity group. And uh, so that is dependent on campus and then the district, and it's always looking at the prior year. So it won't be every group, it'll just be your two lowest, cause we're trying to close that achievement gap. Then they made a high focus group, which is all of our specialized populations, emergent bilingual, dyslexia, sped, you know, all those, right? And so they are look, making that group be, what's the, what's the positive there? Is they're wanting it to be an unduplicated count. In our previous system, a student who is um, emergent bilingual, dyslexic. And um, a foster student is counted against us three times, or counted for us three times. And so they're saying, you know what, we don't need to look at them multiple times, let's just do it as an unduplicated count. So it just counts one, uh, one score there. Uh, then they also want to um, us to look at former students, so the last three years in special education. And continuously enrolled, which means they've been in the district for three years, okay? Um, and so those are the changes they propose to the groups. And then additionally, they wanted to move to a graduated um, uh, progress measure for this. In previous years, they had a target, thirty-seven percent. If the campus got thirty-six percent, it was no, zero, no points, no, no effort. Even though maybe the year before they were at twenty-eight, and they made seven points gained. So what they're wanting to do here is similar to what they, what they, what they proposed in the growth measure. That they would give um, campuses and districts um, credit for moving uh, those targets um, forward. Um, and m- making progress, even if it's not to hitting the target, okay? Do you guys have any questions about the rationale about why they're changing the groups, or how this could impact Temple? Yes, sir.
Um, if a student is, uh, can you go back?
Yep.
So the, I guess, uh, salmon color, whatever.
Mm-hmm.
Bar there that has uh, ethnic groups, so that's going to be. You said that they can only count once, right? So if I have a student who is American Indian, they also.
So only if that American Indian was our lowest performing group?
So they can still count, at least they can count twice for if they're.
In that, in one of those, yeah, in, in that group, but they wouldn't count twice in the high focus group? Yeah, mhm. So if American Indian is not our lowest group, they wouldn't count in that area.
So in the overall accountability system, they could still count once. They're just not gonna count, they're not gonna be duplicated in the high focus.
Yes, sir. Mm-hmm, okay. All right, other rating proposed changes. And hopefully you're not bored by now. Um, so the other things they're proposed is, is at the district level, they are proposing to add a part B to closing ga- closing the gaps. That is the, that is basically the system we currently have. Right now, we have two accountability systems. We have the A through F system that we measure. Um, but we also have that results-driven accountability system that we come and talk to you about when we have that. And that's the um, measure that measures the uh, uh, progress of our students. Um, our sped students, our emergent bilingual students are, you hear, you, you hear me saying the same thing again, dyslexia, foster. So it's all those, all those groups, again, in a separate system. Um, and it looks at graduation rate, it looks at STAR performance, it looks at discipline data, it looks at. So it, it, it's very duplicative, and they realize that it's duplicative. And so they're wanting to take that system and make that a part of the district rating. Um, and call that closing the gaps part B. That will, they will start doing that, they're proposing for the next five years as a report only. And it won't be added until they change the, they have to update the accountability system, which is, which is good. Um, they also are proposing proportional domain ratings. The goal here is they feel that district ratings are not always aligned to campus ratings. And so you might have a lot of campuses that are scoring a certain letter grade, but that's not consistent with what the district has. And so they want to really look at the number of students in grades three through twelve. And give a proportion to each one of those letter grades and calculate that. Um, and um, so when I calculated that on our, on our previous year's grades, that actually helped the district. Right, because I, I was able to pull all that really strong um, uh, scoring at the elementary and middle. Yeah, mhm, so it actually helped us, so yay. Um, yay, there's gotta be a positive somewhere, right? Um, and then it, and the last is they wanna expand the, what they call the three Fs gate. So currently, if you have an F in, in, in three or more domains or the overall rating. The district or the campus cannot get a sixty or higher, the highest score they can get is a fifty-nine. Unless you score a sixty or higher in domain one, which is student achievement. And so they just wanna make that be, if you have a D like that, if you have more, three more Ds, then you can't get higher than a sixty-nine. Um, and uh, that if you, if any campus or district um, doesn't have a dome. If any campus has an overall or a domain score of less than a seventy, the district can't get an overall grade of an A. And that was still there, that was always there. Um, but that's how that works, okay? So then we have to think about, so these are the domains, these are the changes. Now, how are they gonna calculate that? Cause, because what they do is they take all of that information, you get a raw score. It's calculated and scaled to a scale score that then translates to a letter grade, okay? And so they, so they know they're gonna have to make some changes to the cut points because it's been five years. And so what the agency has said is we've had COVID. And we, that's been, that's been very impactful to student learning and student achievement. So we're not gonna change the cut scores on STAR and how we scale that, we're gonna keep the two thousand seventeen uh, measure. That's really, that's really great for us, that's great. And I think that's great for all school districts, because there has been a dip in student achievement because of COVID. The second thing they've said is CCMR though, has been, has improved across the state. So they're going to align those expectations to the class of twenty twenty-one. Um, and then school progress, the growth measure, because they've seen great growth across the state. Um, they're going to do the average of the pre-COVID and the post-COVID score to create that. Trying to be as fair and as transparent as possible. And that is all based on feedback, um, that the commissioner, he's, he's done all these little different um, uh, like little quizzes to ask our opinion. Um, and so he's actually doing what we've asked. Um, for domain three, those things just apply again, they just apply by student group, they just apply by student group. Um, and so they're, they're translating that there. Um, and I think those are all positive. The other thing to note is that graduation rate is also increasing because graduation rate has improved across the state, so that's good as well, okay? Any other questions about the accountability system? I still, I still do too, cause it's not finalized. Okay, so then let's talk about the changes to the STAR test. So not only are we changing the framework of the accountability system. But we're always also changing the test that we're taking to drive the score for the accountability system at the same time. And so this um, is required, um, uh, this is a legislative requirement to change the STAR, that was House Bill thirty-nine oh-six. And the goal is to, really what the commissioner's told us is the goal is to align. The, 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 what we want to see in our classrooms, effective classroom instruction to um, the tech, to the, how we're assessing that. So we don't wanna teach to the test, we wanna make sure that the, that, that we have the right instruction in our classrooms. So that our students can be successful on the STAR. And so there's been significant redesign to the language arts assessments. And so one of the things that they've pushed is to make sure that there are cross-curricular passages on the reading language arts test. So let me show you what I mean. This is a sample passage from fifth grade reading language arts. And the highlighted information in that passage actually correlates to the science standards a student learned in fifth grade. And they learned in fourth grade. So they're, so they're holding the students to the idea that they should have the background knowledge from their science class. So that they'll be successful on the reading language arts class. And that's the same for social studies, okay? And then how does that translate to a question? The question asks, which sentences show the chola co- cactus is difficult to harvest? Select two answers. So the language arts skill is, you have to be able to read the passage, look at your text evidence and figure out, and then choose two answers, not one answer, that's new too. Um, but you should have background knowledge from your fourth grade science class and your fifth grade science class to be able to answer that question. Too easy. The next redesign is that, the next thing with the redesign is they wanna have new tech question types. So one of the, one of the um, part of the statute was that no more than seventy-five percent of the student, of the STAR test could be multiple choice. They wanted to have new item types to encourage uh, rigorous thinking um, in our classrooms. And how that would translate to the um, the state assessment. So these are the fourteen item types, new item types, that our students could possibly experience on the state assessments this spring. And what you'll see there is um, where those, because not all item types go on every test, most math item types are just for math. Um, but you'll see, if you look at the bottom, you see two new things that are new for us. So short constructed response is basically where students have to respond to a question um, based on their reading. Um, and they have to, um, or a, a primary source, some sort of stimuli. And then they have to um, use text evidence to defend their answer. That is now going to be on every language arts test and, um, including English one and two. And every science test, five, eight, and biology. And every social studies test, eighth grade and US history. So constructed response that students have to type in. Um, so our third graders are focusing on typing a little bit, um, and second grade as well. Um, and then the extended construction response we'll talk about as well. The other challenge that students have is now they have to be able to choose two answers on some of their questions. So they have multi-part or multi-choice. And that's challenging, cause we've been teaching them what's the best answer, what's the one best answer. So we're having to adjust our thinking and our approach to that as well. Here's some examples, so for example, in the classroom, you want kids to create a model to show you their thinking. So on the math test, we're asking them to shade and, and to demonstrate that model, so there's, there's an example of that. Um, here's an example of that open-ended response. So in a class, you might have a kid read something about social studies. And have them tell us, write a cause and effect paragraph about uh, the French and Indian War, I think I did that in my class. Um, but then on STAR, you'll see that they might have to, based on paragraph seven. Um, why does the wood rat use the cactus to build its nest? And they have to pull that evidence from there, and that would be in a constructed response that they might have to have. And so we're asking our third graders, through our, through our high school students to do that on every assessment. And there'll be at least one to two questions um, per assessment. Then next, we also wanna make sure that there's um, evidence-based writing. So this, so the STAR redesign also has evidence-based writing on it. Previously, we only tested students on a writing prompt in fourth grade and seventh grade, which was typically personal experience. It was, it was more of a personal narrative or an explanation. Um, kids use their own background knowledge to do that. Um, and now we're moving to where it's all evidence-based, okay? So an example of that, this is a um, fourth grade ass- assessment item. So kids are going to read this play. And then they need to explain how Herbie's behavior changes and how that, how that, how this is developed by the playwright. And so they would have to create an essay for that as well. And so that's an example of what a fourth grader would do. And so that is only going to be shown, that is only gonna be required on the reading language arts test, that's not on science and social studies, okay? Um, and lastly, all STAR tests are now administered online. If you, if you want a child not to take the test online, they typically have to be um, under the protection of like an IEP. Through special education or a five oh four plan, um, um, or et cetera. They have to have a, a disability that really um, needs that, because we, and so we, but we've moved to online testing for a while. Um, and, and the state wants us to do that because of all of those accommodations that are provided there. So, so what am I doing to make sure that our students are prepared for that, right? What are we working on? Um, and so really, these are the, these are the instructional and focused areas that we've been working on all year. Because we were aware of the STAR redesign last spring, this is not new to us, okay? We knew this was coming. Um, and so we're focusing on student performance, making sure we use those high-quality instructional materials. So we can make sure that students are reading and writing at the rigor required of STAR. Um, and really using um, instructional strategies that focus on making and justifying choices, um, responding to stimuli. We're truly focusing on making kids do that type of thinking in the classroom. Um, we wanna, we're continuing to work on our, increasing our CCMR points by looking at those IBC opportunities. And making sure we're not sunsetting, you know, focusing on those sunsetting things, working on our college and preparatory classes. Um, focusing on student growth and then monitoring tell pass. And so I know that's a lot of information, and I'm so sorry, I tried to condense it as much as I could. Um, but what questions can I answer um, for you about the changes to the STAR chest in our response to support our, our students in these areas?
Like the changes in the writing assessments seem, seem pretty big. You said that they, all year, they've known that that was a change and been able to. Instruct with that in mind, that that's.
We've been working on that, we've been working on that. So that was, um, we, we knew that was coming, and so there was a lot of training this summer over the STAR redesign and the STAR testament, uh, uh, assessment items. Um, that's why we shifted to really focusing on high-quality instructional materials and being very amplified. Is, is a, is a product that really supports students in having that embedded writing. Um, and at the middle school and high school, we really focused on using um, a product called Student Study Sync. Where there's very um, rigorous assess, um, text for students. And they have embedded short answers, um, that match that they have embedded, a long and, and extended construction response. And so we have been practicing that. But what I, what I couldn't tell you, and I don't have a baseline for, is we have a rubric, and we've tried to use the state's rubric. And we've had training on that about what that looks like and what score that will be. But without a baseline, I don't know, I don't know how our students are going to perform. My hope is, um, and we've been preparing for that, my hope is that they will do well. Because I, our teachers have shifted their instruction, have been expecting more of that in our classrooms. Is it perfect and exactly where it needs to be? No, we're, but we're working on it, we're definitely working on it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, Lisa, that's very comprehensive, thank you for the review. All right. Item C is facility operations, Mr. Boyd. One consideration for approval of contracts between MRB for design and architectural services. With Edwards Academy, Wheatley, AEC, and Operations Center of Projects. Okay, so that item will be skipped tonight?
We did not receive those in time for tonight, so yes, we will.
All right. All right.
Bring that to you at a future meeting.
All right, we'll just move on. Item two is consideration for approval of a contract with KPA for the design of the Travis Competition Complex Project.
All right, thank you, Mr. Posey. School Board, if you, you'll see in your, in your information that we bring to you tonight, consideration for approval of a contract with KPA. As you know, and as was approved in the consent portion, we approved that contract with the city for a joint use of development and operation of a competition field at Travis. So this is the next step that allows us to keep moving forward. David Patrick is the individual that we've worked most closely with on this, and he has prepared the attached proposal that, that outlines the scope of services for the design and the development of that, of that field or that complex. Specifically, this proposal details the overall project's scope to include schematic design, final design, opinion of probable cost, bidding, and then oversight of all of those processes. The cost for KPA services will be two hundred eighty-seven thousand, three hundred dollars. Once the project has been designed and bids have been received, a GMP for construction of the project will be presented to you for consideration, that will be in a few months. The project includes the design and construction of a competition field for football and soccer, a four-lane track, bleachers, lights, a concession stand, restroom facility, drainage relocation, pedestrian, and parking improvements. So it will be a substantial project when it, when it gets completed. Right now, the, the opinion of probable cost that they have is around three point eight million dollars for that. So hopefully, that's, that, that's, that's a good target for us to arrive at. So do you all have any, have any questions about the process or what we're starting on tonight?
Members, any questions? This is approval, I know Ms. Juarez will have to abstain, will abstain from this. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve.
Motion by Mrs. Myers.
A second.
Seconded by Mrs. Cook. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
A like sign to oppose. The ayes have it with Ms. Juarez's abstention, thank you.
Thank you very much.
We'll need to go back to item C one, that's consideration approval of contract with MRB. Since it is an action item, we'll need to table it to a future meeting. So is there a motion to do so?
I move to table item C one.
All right, motion by Ms. Gowen, is there a second?
Second motion.
Seconded by Mrs. Davis. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Like sign, ayes have it, thank you very much. Item D is finance, with no issues tonight, no report. E, student services, nothing tonight. F is board committee reports, the facilities committee update. The next committee meeting is Thursday, January twenty-six, two thousand twenty-three, at four PM. There was not a meeting in December. And two, the policy committee update, the next committee meeting, Wednesday, January twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-three, at four PM. Also, we didn't have a meeting in December. But with that, we are adjourned tonight, thank you very much for attending.